Please assemble for the 233rd Burlington Town Meeting. Doesn't look like there's anybody left to assemble, so please join me in the sluting the flag. It's behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Been a long time since we've had a real town meeting. I've been privileged to serve as the moderator for the pre-town meeting for the last three years, and this will be the, if you count the years that I was that, I'm probably at 21 years of doing it, and I'm not here forever, and I've always wanted to find, it was finding, part of my responsibility, it's just part of any officer's responsibility to find their successor. So if any of you are motivated, I will help you transition into that. That being said, the first article of business is to elect a town moderator for the year ensuing. This is Article 22nd, and the nominations are now open. I'll remind you, there's no need for a second, it's just the nomination process. Mr. Warren?
I'd like to nominate Paul Gillis.
Thank you, and in light of that, I will step aside and ask the chair of the Select Board to take over, so that there's no sense of bias or prejudice here.
That's all right. Any other nominations for moderator? Hearing none? Those in favor of Paul Gillis? Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you. It's a job I have longed for for many years. I was previously in state service, and I had to work on Town Meeting Day, so I couldn't even attend. And then, when I was finally freed from self-service, state service, I was Ruth Town's parliamentarian for a while, and then I got the job. And at the time, it was a different town meeting than it is today. First of all, there was a few more people, but it was also that we voted everything on the floor, including the budget, and I think it's a reasonable argument that the budgets should be voted by a larger number, and that elections should be done by a larger number, but it does tend to drag us out of that. And so today, we have three more articles. One of them isn't even an article to speak of, it's just to review the reports. And the most provocative and perhaps the best opportunity for us to serve, to talk to each other as a town, will be Article 25, the Other Business. But to go next is to hear the reports of the town officers for 2022, and if you have a booklet, or if you don't, there's one back there. And I just take the opportunity to go through it page by page to invite you to ask questions about it. The Select Board is hungry to answer questions. And the Select Board report is at five, page five, with the budget at seven. And this would cover, as you can see, the basic finances of the year. Any questions about the Select Board's report? The assessors' report, you remember, we used to have listers, but we don't anymore. So we now have an assessor, and the assessor's report is there. Any questions about that? The Town Clerk's Office report is on 16, and 17, and 18, and 19, or actually, 17, the births and deaths, number of licenses and things.
Yes.
Sorry. Could you go back? So Matt Levin, Lord Road.
You also have to come up here to talk.
Okay, well, good question. So I'm... So, Matt Levin, Lord Road, I'm tempted to ask, just in the interest of being provocative, when I'm on a board myself, I often ask the treasurer, whatever, what are the one or two things in the budget that are the most interesting, right? If we were, we're doing our fiduciary responsibility of being responsible for the town's budget, if you were to point out to, because it's a lot of numbers, right? Are there a few places where you feel like something interesting's happening, or if you were particularly paying attention to what was going on, this is something that would stand out? This is completely, I have no idea what it is, because I really don't look at the budget that carefully. So if you were, say, here are a couple of things that are interesting, what might you point to for the citizens to have a sense of what's going on? And I assume there's something interesting, but I literally don't know what that might be.
The, one of the more interesting things was basically our increased costs in our budget.
Can you use the mic?
One of the, one of the big things was the increased costs in the budget. Our insurance rates, which, I think the board did a good job on maintaining the budget that we had control over. Our troubles are that we have a budget that's driven by outside forces, such as insurances, cost of equipment, et cetera. If you're looking at the budget, I would ask you to look at the, where a lot of your increases are coming from. It's, it's not that we have spent foolishly, it's just that our expenses have just gone up like everybody else's, and you know how that is. Our fuel costs for the trucks, et cetera, et cetera. Other than that, I can't say as I know anything that really stands out for me. Any other board members have something to say?
I'm Flo Smith. I'm the vice chair on the Select Board, and I would echo what Brad just explained. I would also point out that we did raise funding for the police department, and I believe that Berlin is growing. I think we all know that, and with that comes additional, additional fees. Thank you. Also echoing what Brad said, the insurances. If you look at page 11, you'll see under health insurance for the police, that the budget in fiscal year 23 was $205,930, and the budget for fiscal year 2024 is $262,000. So Brad said it really well, that some things are outside of our control. But when we looked at the budget, we tried to hold our costs where we could, and not have the budget impact adversely on the residents. We are looking at the future for local options tax, and that was on the ballot before. Basically, it was a minimal amount of people, that it did not pass as a result, but we are going to look at that in the future. That could help our budget going forward, because as we know, things do not decrease in terms of our needs. We will always be asked for more. And so the police did ask us for more, and we looked at that in all regards, and you know, our police forces increasing, we needed other vehicles. With additional staffing comes additional costs, and so that's built into the budget as well. So that's what I'll add, and I think maybe Joe has something to add as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Flo. Yeah, so with the growth of the town, there's a lot, there's a need of the support services, like Flo was talking about the increase. I think it was one additional officer for PD. But we also have administrative needs, and so adding the assistant treasurer, that was an added position, and so you're going to see that as well in support of the growth of Berlin.
I'll be quick. So I'll be quick. I'll probably reiterate a couple of things that the board said, too, but just a couple of things of interest. Second year, I just crossed my second year in the job with this, come from the private sector, so the public has been a little bit eye-opening for me as well on this. But a couple of things on the budget, as you all know, costs are going up. I'm going to go to the highway real quick. You know, two years ago, we didn't really have, we had a lot of debt, and we've paid that debt off. But going along with that, on a capital budget, there wasn't a lot of planning in advance for highway equipment, police cruisers and things. So there was a significant change in the budget, and when I say significant, I'm talking about $300,000 plus or minus there, just to start putting money in the capital budget, so we would not have to borrow money, as interest rates go up, right? When it comes time to purchase a $280,000 dump truck now each year, because we're trying to do one a year, and build a real plan to do that, along with the police cruisers, as they wear out, we need a replacement to be able to purchase that. So that money is showing up in the budget to build that up. And then every seven to 12 years, we're going to need to buy a piece of heavy equipment, a loader or a grader will need to be replaced, mechanical equipment that wears out. So that's been a fairly significant change in the past two years in the budget as well, that's had an impact. As many of you are aware as well, we just recently went through police negotiations. We settled on another three-year contract. I think it went, personally, I think it went reasonably well. It dragged out far too long, but we did reach a reasonable agreement. And if you look around the state, Berlin is fortunate enough to have one of the only fully-staffed police forces right now within the state, and that includes the state police as well. I got to say, they're a pretty good group of individuals as well. So we're very fortunate in that respect. And I think a lot of it has to do with the new chief as well. There's been a morale change there in that department, and the officers all seem very happy to be working here as well, and glad to be here. In fact, Chief Paul, Paul Brown is in the back, so thank you for that. Thank you. So, and again, as Brad started off, insurances, just to give you a number for some of the costs that we don't control, you'll see it in the report, but our health premiums, $23,870. You know, there was a difference of, from last year's budget to this year's budget overall, of about $35,000 in cost, just for insurances and things like that. So it's been a significant increase all the way around on that. There was one more thing I wanted to mention, and that was our audit report. Some of you will be looking for that. That dragged on for some time, that just completed, they got their final information last week. So that will be coming out, it will be available, and it will be available on our website as well, because it just came out. There's, we still have to go through the management review with the board on that as well. There were, there were a couple of findings. I don't have them in front of me, so I won't try to talk to them, but there were, but they were pretty much minor in nature, nothing critical. But that will be out and available very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Question board? Sorry, I took yours. Is that a question for me?
For you and the board, years ago, we used to give formal presentations about the budget, and we just stopped one year, and I'm never quite sure why. I would like to see that again. We could do it by video, I could get it done at home before you, and it could be on the website, so people could, because this, just this small conversation was very enlightening, and I appreciated those comments.
So I might be confused on this a little bit. We did hold some public hearings with the board when we were reviewing and presenting the budget. You're saying above and beyond a public hearing?
Above and beyond. We used to have Mike Schreysberg would do, stand over there and do the school, and then whoever the chair was would do it for the Select Board, and it was graphs and charts and, just so that on Town Meeting Day, we, we had a good idea.
Okay.
Just a thought.
All right. Thank you.
Where were we? We were at the end of the auditor's report, I mean, assessors' report. That was page... Well, no, I guess we did the clerks, too. So pages 20 and 21, the Board of Civil Authority, the Board of Abatement. Anybody want to talk about that? No? Berlin Highway Department, 21, zoning administrator, 23, flood insurance, zoning administrator, 24. Stop me if you have questions. Sing it right out. Planning Commission Report, 25, Police Department, 27 through... Through 37. Yes, Matt?
Chief, like to similarly point out any key points in the police report that might be mentioned to us? I'm sorry, are you quite clear? Well, just as I asked about the budget, if there were just things that are interesting, if there are things in your report that you might point out to us that might be of interest?
I think the only real thing of interest is, it's been pointed out previously, is some of the stuff is just outside of our control, that have cost more this year than they have in past years. Probably the most point of interest is taking on an extra officer. And the reasoning behind that is police departments have traditionally kind of ebb and flowed with staffing. Berlin, over the last couple of years, has really struggled with maintaining staff, and that causes a stress on officers that have to cover those shifts, and causes an increase in overtime budget. You're not getting quality enforcement or services when somebody's having to work 20 or 30 extra hours a week. So kind of planning on that, we're never really at full staffing. We took on an extra officer. Right now, we're better staffed than anybody really that I can think of, especially in our local area, let alone the state. And it allows us to be more proactive than we have been in the last year, year and a half. It allows a little bit more of a buffer for those officers, not one officer on shift all the time, taking all the calls. We have some overlap, allows officers to kind of share those responsibilities and share that work for them. And so I think that's pretty much the only thing of note, that's a real big change in our budget in particular, is having that extra person. Yes?
Do we still provide service to the hospital?
We do.
How's that going? I'm just curious on the mental health side of this.
There has been, as you're probably aware in the news, a significant increase in workplace violence at the hospital. We have historically, prior to my coming on board, had an officer dedicated to the hospital, and it was like an overtime shift, and that stopped happening for whatever reason, was well before my time, so I don't know really what the reasoning was behind that. The hospital has asked us recently to try to be more present there, and I've tried to discuss how that would look financially, because I can't just post an officer over there out of our own budget, and they're not able to fund that on their own. But we do try to be as visible over there as we can. Officers make that part of their kind of routine patrol to pop in and make sure people are good there and they're being seen. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Sort of following the incidents that occurred at the Hilltop?
Yes.
Has there been any improvement in that? Looking at page 29, there's obviously quite a few incidents that occur at the Hilltop, one specific location. Is that improving at all?
Over the last, we've recently have had weekly meetings with the Hilltop to kind of increase communications there, along with representatives from the state, so they can kind of keep an eye on those interactions. I think over the last couple of weeks, there has been better communication. It will be interesting to see if that results in kind of a downturn in our responses there, but I do feel that we're, there's a better relationship there now than there has been in the past. They certainly seem to be more responsive to some of our concerns. They seem to be more responsive to some of our concerns of late. Anything else? Thank you.
The list of the town of Berlin's staff and their wages and benefits is on 38 and 39. Recreation Committee, 40, Conservation Commission, 41 and 42, 42 Development Review Board. And then the other reports are, not that you shouldn't read them, but they're not town reports, so they're, they're worth reading, but they're not town departments. So any comments, questions on the town report, in a sort? Yes, ma'am?
I'm back. I didn't see anything in here on the town center, and I'm just wondering why it's not included here, and if there's anybody that could let us know what's happening, because we just keep hearing drips and dreads.
Who's our town center expert here?
Sorry.
And Carla.
Maybe it was me a little bit, but it's not Carla. There are experts on that.
Tom and Carla, they're not here, so...
Okay, I will find out.
But there was some news recently about that.
I probably can't speak too intelligently about this, as much as Tom and Carla would be able to. So as you know, we're the third in the state, the only one outside of Chittenden County that's been approved for the new town center. One of the, a couple of the contingencies that go along with that, there's some actions that we have to take as a town with regards to that, and, and one of the stipulations is we have to have some sort of office property located within that town center. We negotiated and met with the Washington County, the School Union District, for 3.8 acres, as you come in off of 62 on the Mall Road on the left-hand side, to give that back to the town. And that is within days of being completed. So once that's complete, then we have to decide what we're going to do with that property to fulfill part of the requirements that we have with the state for that new town center. Some of the other things that are going on in there, you heard about Fox Run, I'm sure, or the development, they, they're the ones that spoke today, that they purchased the property from the mall, are in the process of it, to put that, I think it's a 30-room unit in as well. There is, there has been another application applied for another restaurant, coffee shop in that, in that area as well, that's moving along. And that's probably about as much detail as I can provide, but I'm happy to get something updated and on our website as well. I'll have Tom and Carla do that, and we'll have some, some updated info. And we also have, thanks to our tech group of clerks, new clerks, we do have a Facebook page as well, where we'll be putting information on, so I'll put in a plug for that while I'm here at this time as well. Is that okay for now? Okay.
Back to the warning.
To that point, I think it would be helpful if the plan for next year for this meeting was to have someone available to be able to give a report to everyone about that. It's slow progress, so I don't expect that there'll be some big change between now and then, but even though there are only a few of us here, I'm sure we would all appreciate, even if it's just a few minutes, an update in this forum, I think that would be great. In fact, I could also ask Paul, I have to admit, I have never entirely understood the relationship between the town and the fire department, and I'm not asking anyone to explain the whole thing, but I'm curious if someone could give an update on the status of that relationship, and I know in the past there were discussions about things changing, so if someone could just give us a brief update on exactly what the connection is. I don't see anyone from the fire department here, but...
You have the president, the president.
I usually see them over there, so if you could just give us a brief update on where things are, because I've lost track. Thank you.
Great question. Been asking that for a long time myself. So we have had these discussions for, for years now about the relationship between the Berlin Fire Department and the town, and you know, it doesn't, is it right to stay that, that corporate entity standalone department? And, and my opinion is no. Back in the day, when there was nothing but a dozen farmers out here in the town of Berlin, and we had three roads, it seemed to be the right thing to do. In fact, no one wanted to touch it, because who wanted it then? But when we're talking about the growth of Berlin, the, you know, what we were just talking about earlier, you go up and down the Barrymont Playa Road, we, we have new small communities or whatnot popping up, it, it only stands to reason that the town, the fire department needs to grow as well. And as a volunteer, it is not going to happen that way. I think in your report, I'm going to apologize, I think the budget, you see the first page, but the documentation, the supporting documentation is not, not in the report, and so we'll put that up on the website as well. But there is a chart in there which forecasts, it shows the first, shows five years of call data, and it projects where we see we may be going. And that is not, some of that is medical calls, it's not somebody's house burning. There's just a lot of traffic coming through the town of Berlin. We are that intersection, okay, of Central Vermont. A lot of those are motor vehicle accidents, and a lot of alarm activations and whatnot, with the growth that we have. So we've had those discussions, and we're getting maybe a little more serious about it. In fact, I had my, my chair ask me, how close are we to having these, you know, having an outcome? So I asked him, I said, I don't know, how close is the Select Board in having that outcome? But anyway, we're having these conversations. And I think if, unfortunately, we don't see the, the supporting documents in there, but last year, we turned around and put in weekend coverage. So I have people at the station on weekends, and we have a response time of three minutes or less, okay? It's a lot better than the 11, 12, whatever minutes it takes for someone to get from their house to the station to your place on Lord Road. Okay? When you look at that supporting document, you're going to see weekday shifts, and right now, I got a zero in there. It's just, we have to have these conversations, and where are we going to be? So I don't know how close we are, but the conversations are, are going, continuing.
Thank you.
Anything else?
There will be more, I'm sure. Okay. Article 24, shall the town... I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, because Joe just spoke to it, I just wanted to ask Joe, if his budget information is not included in here, which, are you going to make that available on the website, or?
You're going to put it, I'll give it to, to the town to put it on their website.
Okay, because I think there was a significant amount of budget information that did not get included in the report, I found very useful.
Anything else on 23, the town reports? 24, shall the town collect its real and personal property taxes to defray the expenses of the town for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024 in installments? One-fourth of the taxes to be due by delivery or by U.S. Postal Service postmark, no private postal meter postmarks, on or before August 15th, 2023. One-fourth of taxes due on or before November 15th, 2023. One-fourth of the taxes due on or before February 15th, 2024, and one-fourth due on or before May 15th, 2024, with an 8% penalty and 1% interest per month, or a portion thereof, to be charged for the late payment of any installment. It's been three years since we've done this, but I need someone to say, I move the articles. Bob?
I move the article. 24 is written.
And anyone second? Pat. And the floor is now open for discussion. And if there is no discussion, you've got to hear it again. Anyone? No? Shall the town collect its real and personal property taxes to defray the expenses of the town for the period? the town for the period July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four installments? One-fourth of the taxes to be due by delivery or by U.S. Postal Service postmark, no private postal meter postmarks, on or before August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. One-fourth of taxes due on or before November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. One-fourth of taxes due on or before February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and four, one-fourth due on or before May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with an eight percent penalty and a one percent interest per month or a portion thereof to be charged for a late payment of any installment. Are you ready for the question?
You should say eight percent.
Eight percent if you're late.
And one percent.
And in one percent interest on top of that.
Okay.
In other years, there's been lots of debates about that, but that would be, it'd require an amendment. I'm not encouraging, I'm just letting you know that. Anybody else ready for the question? All in favor of this article, Article twenty-four? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The article passes. Now we have an anomaly. In the report, there is no twenty-five. However, I believe, if the clerk will reassure me, the posted version has an other business article, at least the one that you handed out to me. So it's not right here, but I can assure you that you would be okay to go forward and discuss anything you want, as long as it doesn't involve a binding vote. And one of the things we're going to do today is we want to hear from our representatives, but Pat?
I was wondering if this was the right time to talk about the senior citizen, I didn't make any of your opinion here. And I think Vince could talk about that.
Mont Hiller Senior Center.
Mont Hiller Senior Center, yes.
We had been talking earlier, and to the extent that anyone takes my legal advice anymore, you can't cram it in for Tuesday.
You can't.
You need a special vote, election of thirty days' notice, and that may be.
So that would be a special town meeting, because it also includes Meals on Wheels, which is critical.
Am I, anybody else? I'm just talking for you a second. No? Okay.
Yeah, no, you're right. We've had some discussions since this morning, just to try to understand the best way forward to move this, to support them. Obviously, we have a feeling from the people that were here this morning and this afternoon that we want to move forward with that. The only way to do it properly after further discussion is we will have to hold a special meeting on that and then bring it to, bring it to a vote to the town, so there'll be a special, you know, vote for that as well. We've got to do the thirty days, so that's the soonest that we'll be able to do that is, you know, thirty days from now is have the meetings, bring it to a vote at that point in time. So just as a point, that they are coming to the, we have a select board meeting Monday and they are coming as well to talk about it with the board.
I'm curious about their funding between now and if we pass this over, can get that money, because I'm sure they hate to see Meals on Wheels and the senior center itself.
Right. And again, that's a question, that's a question we can, we can talk with them about, that the board can speak with them on, on Monday as well, so. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I wonder if anyone here came to town meeting today because it was on a Saturday? Or does everybody always come on Tuesday because it's town meeting day?
I think we only have one example of that. It was only one year where we had town meeting.
This is it. I'm saying, was anyone able to come because Tuesday's a workday and they could never come to town meeting? Just asking a floor question. Yes. Okay, thanks.
I mean, I guess if you went back to the town vote where we said we'd go to Saturday, that was an assumption people supported.
That was the goal, was can we get more people here? There are not more people here, but it's a Saturday during school vacation.
Storm, yeah.
And a snowstorm, not a great example.
Next year, I expect to see this whole hall filled.
Wouldn't that be delightful?
And I think it would help if the select board could produce some very controversial issues to bring them out. Matt?
Actually, I, could I come to the front?
Yes.
So, so I have two comments. One is related to what we were just talking about, about the previous topic. Just, if I might, just some background on the, on the senior center. So as I understand it, what happened is that they, like the other entities that are on the ballot, they missed the deadline to submit the materials necessary to get on the ballot. And there were a few others that are the usual, the usual that we see year after year, that at least one other that also failed to submit on time to get on the ballot. This is not a large percentage of the funding of the senior center, so it is not the case that they are in danger of suddenly ceasing operations. It is an important part of their budget, but it's not a huge percentage. So I, I trust the select board will move forward in whatever way is possible, but Pat, in terms of your concern that there's, like, they're not going to shut down because of this. It's not a good thing for them, but it's not. To get to Peg's point, I, I do wonder about this question of what happened, how many people are here? I was going to pose a different question to you, Paul. What we just voted on, Article twenty-four, has to happen, right? I mean, if it doesn't, that's, it's an important thing for the town function. So the question, and then I'm going to pose a different question, the question, what would happen if there was no one here to vote on that? Now, obviously, the select board would be here, so there would be at least some people here to vote.
One person is the town.
Right. So, but I'm, I'm wondering, to get to your joke, if it might make sense for the select board and others, I'm sure as the chair of the Board of Civil Authority, we could be brought into this conversation as well, does it make sense to try to figure out, not inventing a controversy? That's not, but, but is there something we could do with programming or something else to make it so that this activity was more appealing to more people to pull them in? It would take some work. I'm not trying to minimize it, and it may be that we talk about it, we don't come up with anything, but it seems like it would be better if there were more people here. And so it might take some work to get a few more people here, because, I mean, look what happened when I said, well, tell us about the budget, and you told us about it, and then even the few people here said, oh, and that made us think about other things. So I'm wondering, in the hypothetical, what if you had town meeting and no one showed up? There would be things that have to happen that wouldn't happen, even if it's only one article. So maybe we need to put a little bit of work into creating a little bit more something so that we make sure that that doesn't happen.
I would love that.
Not that it's easy, but we could at least try.
In my experience, one of the things that we've done over the years inadvertently and with the legis, fortunately with the legislature's support, is to give more power to the state than the towns and more power to the select board than the voters, and there's a deficit. And I think that's directly proportional to the interests that people have in local government. Many towns, not, I'm not making a judgment here, don't, don't seem to dare to put policy questions to the voters. And even though that might not be in a binding way, that sometimes boards don't want to hear what the people have to say. But in order for us to have a vigorous town meeting, we need to have a vigorous electorate. And it seemed to me that if we, if the board were willing to share some power, it doesn't have to be anything more than to see what the voters think about the direction of the common or, in order, a series of articles we could add here, they wouldn't necessarily be binding, but they would involve a drawing together of the folks that are here and, and an opportunity for the kind of dialogue that we started to have today here. So that's just one person's thought. Representative Donahue, would you like to speak to us?
Do you need to vote to permit me?
It is a pre-approval from earlier this morning, so, and as well, you want to come up too?
Thank you, sure.
Thank you for being here. Thanks. Thank you all.
Thanks very much. Couple of quick things. First of all, I left outside, if you want to pick one up, a copy of the comments I made on the House floor yesterday about Berlin and the Hilltop Inn. And it really was a challenge to all of my colleagues to say we can't do things that leave some towns and the people that we're trying to help stranded. Because the people we're trying to help, if we're not helping them in a right way, if we're not providing supports, they're, they're not in a better environment. It's not helping them. So hopefully, as we plan for the year ahead, we'll, we'll do a better job. I think we're facing a lot of problems that could have been expected, that because the federal government stepped in with, with COVID, with so many extra dollars to do so many things, and then people get used to that as the norm and all of a sudden, there's no money anymore, and people are perceiving it saying, you know, well, we can't cut that, people rely on it. But then that means we take over funding it, whether it's housing for homeless, whether it's food. You may have heard in the news recently, the supplement to food stamps people were getting are coming to an end. People have come to rely on that. So that's one big area that we're having to deal with. There is still lots of extra revenue because of the economic impact of the COVID funds. That's all going to ebb away and we're looking at the subsequent year as being a significant potential drop in income or real budget pressures. So if we increase base funding, we'll be back to looking at cuts in the subsequent year. So, you know, there's some big money items. I would love to hear, not in public forum, but individually, send me an email. I don't think we can do it all. If you think there's something particularly critical with revenues we do have, let me know what your priority are, because basically, one is sustaining the things we have. The proposed budget has a lot of areas that have no increases, not a decrease, but not an increase. And in today's environment, that means it's a decrease. Things like funding our designated mental health agencies. So increasing them to maintain against inflation would be a huge budget item. So that's one, is our budget. Number two is the House has passed a family, the House Committee has passed a family and medical paid leave program that would pay a hundred percent of somebody's salary for up to three months for a very broad range of needs, and that would come through a payroll tax. So it wouldn't be in the general budget, but it would come out of people's pay bills. I think there's a lot of good reasons for supporting that, but it's, it's a big cost involved for folks. Third one you've heard a lot about, and that's the clean heat or affordable heat or unaffordable heat, depending on what you title it. I really support doing things to really attack and address climate change. This particular mechanism is a little bit, well, it's certainly untested and it will cost a lot upfront for the payoff, you know, a decade or two or more down the line. So hearing input for that is really important for me. And then finally, childcare, which we also all know is a crisis, but proposals to put, you know, not just tens of millions, but a hundred or two hundred million to better support our childcare system. So I would really be interested in hearing back from people. Second big area is the legislature itself. There have been a lot of discussions around wanting to increase the opportunity for people to serve and the diversity of people who serve, working families and so forth, who really are not able to because of the financial pressures. That means proposals for spending a lot of money, for instance, providing childcare, providing increased salary levels or year-round stipends for the off-session where there's a lot of work involved. Health insurance, things like that. Certainly something to be said about it, but also a real change sometimes in functioning. There's a lot of push right now to extend some of our remote voting opportunities that we use for COVID into regular sessions. So allowing people to vote from home if they have to stay home with a sick child, for instance, and not be present in the State House, which raises a lot of issues, that's one that's a big concern of mine. So those are some things to think about, that I would welcome input. And one last thing I want to tell you about, if, if people missed it, last night on Channel Six, on six o'clock news, WCAX, there was an awesome little feature on a thirteen-year-old young man from Berlin, Jesse Batdorf, who did a great job, he was incredibly articulate, talking about the Right to Repair Bill. He does a lot of computer work for friends and neighbors, one of those kids you're just so proud of. You should be proud in Berlin to have a young man like this. Entrepreneur, can't, can't do some of the repairs that he could easily do because of the sort of monopoly on repairs that a lot of things come with now. He's the one who educated me about that need. As a result, I put in a Right to Repair Bill, along with some other cosponsors, and WCAX was doing a report on it, and I said, you know, somebody ought to talk to us, Jesse, because he's the one who educated me. And so they went out and did this feature on him, and he just did a great job. It was a really nice piece, so you might want to, you know, look up on the web and take a look at it, because a lot, lot to be proud of, that young man from Berlin. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll stick around, you're almost over. If people have questions or want to talk, feel free.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ken Goslin, I'm your other state rep, and it's an absolute honor to represent Berlin. I love this town. It's a beautiful, beautiful community and very fortunate to, to do it. Going back to one of the comments about the lack of uptown meeting and people showing up and stuff like this, I've been, and I was on the select board in Norfield for ten years. We've been constantly fighting this battle, I think, in Norfield, I think we go Monday night, if I'm not mistaken, to try to get more people involved and try to get people to come back more in the community. I think we keep trying to do everything and it's, it's, it's sad because it's very, very important to what we try to do in Vermont. Couple of things, Ann's touched on a lot of stuff. The one great thing about Ann and I as your representatives is we come from a lot, a lot of times different ways of looking at things and dealing with things. She deals with a lot of healthcare stuff, I'm more of a businessman, more of a administrative guy, I work hand-in-hand with the administration governor a lot. One of the big things that I, I put out there, and we all do an update every other week, it's either Ann or I, and it's on Front Porch Forum, and I think she does a blog, and I do the Facebook thing, but we try to keep everybody appraised at what's going on. And this Hilltop situation has been a, is a, is a huge problem. It's been a problem. The chief, the select board, Vince, everybody has done the job. As far as I'm concerned, where the job hasn't been done is the state. And about three or four weeks ago, it really, really came to a head, and I just happened to be at the right place at the right time. And I knew we had a problem, because I have a pretty good relationship with the administration up here, and, and I knew we were finally going to act, because you're putting these officers in jeopardy, you're putting everybody in jeopardy, you're putting citizens in jeopardy, you're putting the, the hospital right across the street, people are reluctant to go there, they're reluctant to go to the mall. You can see, you can see how many situations we have right down here at the travel center. So that's finally being dealt with, and, and I'm quite optimistic that this is finally going to get under control. I, I know there's, there's a lot of working pieces to this. So it, it is, it's been a major frustration for me for a long time, and I think it's being resolved. The other thing that people are going to want to hear about, I think, is, is the clo- The other thing that people are going to want to hear about, I think, is, is the closure of Lover's Lane Bridge in Riverton, and also the Route Twelve Bridge. That's, that's going to be a lot of work done and probably be replaced. Well, the good thing, if there is a good thing, about the Twelve, Route Twelve Bridge being done, something's going to have to be done to route, to your, to your Lover's Lane Bridge, because there's no way you're going to get vehicles back and forth between here and Norfield. We have these things called covered bridges in Norfield. You're not going over those things with certain pieces of equipment and weights of the vehicles and all that stuff. Paving, I think paving is, is due in twenty-four. Don't hold me to that stuff because it always gets changed and stuff like that, but you'll see a big, you're going to see a big advancement in your roadways between Mont Hiller and Norfield. Your police department, I couldn't be more proud of, I think the chief has done a heck of a job, and it's just great. The other thing is, is hopefully we're finally getting on the other side of COVID. We can get back to more of a regular relationships that we're work, used to working with face to face, which is very, very important. Get out, talk to people. I usually really, really enjoy that. Last couple of months have been very difficult for me, but I'm on my way back on that. So hopefully, we've moved on from that. The other big thing that's been touched a little bit on, in here, that really, really needs to be talked about is the affordability. We've all, everything's been discussed about the employee salaries and the, and the equipment, what it costs and all this stuff. The big thing, I'm a businessman, I'm a common sense guy. I don't have a college education. I went to CTE, and, and I guess I got lucky, and I kind of look at things out of common sense, but we've had a tremendous, tremendous amount of money coming to this state for years because of Senator Leahy, or a lot of it because of Senator Leahy. Senator Leahy is retired. That money is not coming the way it used to come. So people need to really, really, I don't want to be Mr. Doom and Gloom here, but I'm a realist, and we really need to watch the money and be, you know, accountable for the affordability of what it's going to cost to live in this state. The other thing, going back to the public safety, Governor initiated, I think back in August, a ten-point safety plan. We're working on that. We have an update on that that just came out. We're constantly, constantly going over that. We, obviously, we have a big problem with a, with a lot of bad things going on, and we're trying to get that into control. I introduced, it's Bill H. Three Twelve, that has a lot of the governor's concerns, a lot of the administration's concerns, and there's a lot of stuff in there that maybe you'll want to follow what we're doing. I don't want to keep you here all day, but I, I guess in, in closing, we just need a, what I feel is a lot better balance coming out of Mont Hiller, coming to the towns, working together, because we're all in this together. We're all doing this, all for the same reason, and that's you, the citizens, and just try to make every community in Vermont better and safer for all, because that's really what we care about. So if you have any questions, I'll be around here afterwards. I'm sorry I got here late, but some other situations came up, including the snow and stuff like that. But be more than happy to talk to anybody. Again, it's a pleasure serving you. Anybody question? Try to steal his report.
Hey, we've been holding lunch for you.
Thanks, Mike.
Just checking out the window.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Ann. Our town administrator, Vince Conti, has a sermon or two.
Just a couple, just a couple things. I want to, I want to follow up on a couple of things that I, I think are important from what, some of the things that you brought up, things that are going on in the town, maybe that you might not be aware of, and things that I'm going to ask you to be aware of, I guess, that, that we need. So we haven't had for some time an economic development committee. They were just reestablished two weeks ago. Again, we've talked a lot about the town growing. It's going to grow whether we want it to or not. So we need to be prepared for that. We need to be a little forward-looking and manage that growth as best as we can. This is going to be one of the functions of this committee, is to help us do it the right way, what's best for the town and everyone involved. And an example of that is, one of the first things that, that we've asked them to look at is, we're growing, the staff has grown a little bit, should be stable, but we don't have enough room in the town office right now. We've got a job trailer outside where our listers, again, granted, they're, they're one day a week, and our, our public works supervisor are working out of right now, out of a job trailer outside. We have a police force. It's a nine-member force, and they're crammed into one small section of the office as well. There's not, not enough room for them either. So that's an immediate need. One of the things that they've been asked is, what do we look like in five years, ten years, and twenty years? And what are the plans to get there and grow smartly and effectively? So that, that's something that's going on. Anybody has any ideas? They're going to be meeting every other week on Wednesday nights. It's, it's a public meeting. You're welcome to, to, to attend those, or even just send some input or thoughts and ideas. We'll take them all. The other one that came up today that would be interesting, and the board and I would love to have your feedback on, is your opinion and thoughts on the fire department becoming part of the town, becoming a municipal fire department again. That's something, again, preliminary discussions are underway. It's going to move forward in some fashion, but what are your thoughts and ideas on that as well? As at some point, if it moves forward, it will have to be a vote from you all to approve that to move forward. So that's something else. Another thing that's very important, not just for the town, but overall, that we're, we're working on is childcare facility. Talked about that three-point-eight acres of land over there. We've had some preliminary discussions with the school and the, and the hospital about the need. There's a tremendous need just in the central Vermont area as well. Again, thoughts and ideas are welcome, but that's something that we're seriously looking at from a town perspective as well, how to, how to move that forward. And next to the last one is, again, something to think about. There is a handout on the table with a lot of facts and numbers on it and some general questions around the local option tax. I know we've, we've tried, the town has tried for three times now. The last one was reasonably close. Perry just passed it. There's been some articles on that lately. But that's something that we're going to be continuing to look at and try to get more information out to everyone to understand it, get questions back that we can answer, hopefully, to, to, to consider. What it means to the town overall, should it pass, is about six hundred thousand dollars a year in additional revenue that we can use to stabilize the tax base and fund our capital, fund with as well. And then the last thing, our Public Works Board, or a town, town board of volunteers like everyone else, Public Works Board and our DRV Board would love to have some fresh faces and new members. There's some openings there. So pass the word to anybody that may be interested. Get it out there that we would, we would love to fill those, those last two committees up as well. And with that, I will turn it over to our moderator. Thank you.
Unless there's any questions on any of that, that I... I hope you'll join me in thanking these people who have worked hard for us during the evening. And we could go on forever, but if someone were to move to adjourn, and someone would second, and are you ready for that question? All in favor of adjournment of the two-hundred-and-thirty-third Berlind Town Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? See you next year, or maybe at that special. Thank you.